Council meeting, it's great to see so many people here. So I want to welcome you to our city council meeting for Thursday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We will have our opening provided by Councilmember Adams, and then he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father who art in heaven, we come before thee at this time and thank thee so much for the moisture that we've received this past week. We're so grateful for the city of Kaysville and what it provides to us and for the citizens for this great country that we live in. And for those who are fighting for us, we ask thee to please be with the people of Ukraine and all of our soldiers and people who are fighting for this great country. We ask thee to bless them and bless the city of Kaysville in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. First of all, we have called to the public and we have one individual signed up, so explain the way it works. J.C. Johnson, you are welcome to come up and you'll have three minutes to speak to us.
Hi, I'm Jackie Johnson. And I apologize for going a little out of order. I have to go, and I know our thing is coming up on the agenda here in just a minute, but I wanted to speak to the rezoning on Main Street and four seventy-five South. And I first want to thank you so much for your service, and I so appreciate that you have volunteered, not only volunteered, but at great expense and personal sacrifice to serve our community. And I appreciate that. I know that I'm not in your seat because I haven't made those sacrifices, but I do really appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity to meet with my neighbors, so many are behind here, who have come seeking your support in retaining the zone R1 in this property that's coming up. And I also am so happy that the neighbors have been organized and amiable. And tonight, as they each speak and present their case for this, I just hope that this same feeling can pervade because I know sometimes when you're in the seat, you just get attacked, and that is no fun. So we don't want that. I'm just hoping that we have a really great evening and that you can feel our gratitude for you for considering this. And individually, I want to state from my personal perspective, I live just down four seventy-five South. And I personally, and along with some of my other neighbors, avoid that intersection just because it's already such a safety issue we feel. So many of the people from the junior high use that as a transit route to come around. The curve in the road just makes it very difficult. And so, keeping in mind all of the schoolchildren that are going to Davis High, that are going to the junior high at those busy times of the day, we just use other streets. And so now that we're looking at doing an R, I mean, the proposed RM, we're just worried that even more congestion, I'm personally worried that even more congestion there might cause safety issues for our schoolchildren. And that's not just our neighborhood, that's our community because we have so many hundreds of students that come into that area. My next-door neighbor is Mike Belnap, and he's an attorney, and I'm just quoting what he had said, and I'm just going to conclude with this. He said, "No public policy is served by allowing two individuals to change a zone to suit their own financial gain at the expense of compromising the legitimate interest of so many citizens." Citizens who relied in good faith upon the zoning designation that's in place for so many years. And my plea to you tonight is, I hope that you'll represent the citizens here as elected officials. I know you will. I know that perhaps the planning commission is in best interest. They're not elected like you are, and we just accept that you're here as elected officials.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, she's the only person that signed up, so we will continue with our agenda. We have a presentation and a proclamation to declare April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two as Arbor Day, so I will read the proclamation. Whereas Kaysville City, Utah has committed considerable time and resources to the urban forest and has chosen to set aside a special day for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day is observed in every state in the Union and throughout the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify the community, and whereas wherever they are planted, trees are a source of joy and spiritual and mental renewal. Now therefore, I, Tamara Tran, Mayor of Kaysville City, along with the Kaysville City Council, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two as Arbor Day. I also urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our urban forestry program. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thank you. Okay. We now have a proclamation to declare May first through May seventh, two thousand twenty-two as Public Service Recognition Week. And I will also read this for you. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keep our nation running. And whereas the city of Kaysville recognizes its local public employees and community volunteers who provide essential services to residents and visitors with efficiency, dedication, professionalism, and integrity. Those services include public safety, emergency medical services, firefighting and prevention, code enforcement, transportation, water and sewer systems, infrastructure upgrade and maintenance, power and recreation, and conservation, financial policy and records management, planning and assessment services, and more. And whereas many public employees, including police officers and firefighters, risk their lives in service to the people, and whereas public employees are our friends, our neighbors, and our family members, committed to making life better for each and every one of us. And whereas without these public employees, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Whereas the city of Kaysville recognizes the generous contributions of time and talent by public employees and community volunteers and the importance of the services they render. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tamara Tran, Mayor of Kaysville City, along with the Kaysville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May first through May seventh, two thousand twenty-two, as Public Service Recognition Week, and call upon all citizens to recognize and express their appreciation for the important contributions of public employees and community volunteers that make the city a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you for that. All right, now we have Police Department Accreditation Award, and I think I'm turning the time over to Chief Olberg. Our police chief.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I actually need to ask Val Shoup. Val Shoup is the executive director of the Utah Chiefs of Police Association. And it may not mean anything to this group, but Val was a former officer and police chief for many years, and he continues after all these years to keep moving the police industry in Utah forward in a positive manner. And one project that Val has worked on a lot is an accreditation for police departments to try to get us all using best policies and practices. And he's put a lot of work into it, and that's what he's here to talk about tonight.
Oh, thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
I think it got turned off at the three-minute date.
Oh, just a second. Do we know where mine is? Okay, we'll take care of that. Okay, it's on, thank you.
Okay. Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here on behalf of the Utah Chiefs of Police Association. I'm here to make a presentation to your police department for their accreditation from the Utah Chiefs of Police Association. Just to give you a real quick background of how this works, the standards for the accreditation, there are one hundred and seventy-three standards. Those standards include federal law, state law, city ordinances, and other policies and procedures that the department must follow. It's a three-year process. After five years, they have to re-accredit. They have to send in a yearly report that they have updated, anything that comes out of the legislature or new ordinances that may come out of your city, after we've had a review of those ordinances and sent them in. Having said that, it's important to note that there are nineteen cities in the state right now that are accredited, Kaysville now being one of them. There are thirty-nine cities that are in the process. So this process is moving forward, and this is a very positive, especially for those agencies who have liability issues and in the environment that we're in now, this is very critical. So your department is, Chief Olberg has done an outstanding job. As you know, he sits on the Utah Chiefs of Police Association Executive Board. This accreditation by Kaysville was passed through the Accreditation Commission of the State of Utah and has now been approved by the Utah Chiefs of Police Association Executive Board. So Chief Olberg, if you'd like to come up, I'll just read this to you. It says, "The Kaysville Police Department approved and accredited in recognition for the completion of the standards for certification and accreditation as prescribed and mandated by the Utah Chiefs of Police Association, March of two thousand twenty-two." Congratulations, chief.
Yeah, can we grab a picture? Thank you.
And I'm just going to ask that we have Officer Benson in this photograph too because I tasked her with actually putting a lot of this. She did a lot of labor on this. There's a lot of documentation and work. She did a lot of it.
There you go. Thank you. Hey, Officer Benson.
Thank you, that's fantastic. Next on our agenda, we have a police department report by Chief Olberg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do this report every year, and I've sent you a copy in advance. If you have any questions or want to deviate, I want this to be a report that benefits you and the public, so we don't have to follow this script or the report that I've given you in any manner. It was just some information that I try to provide, and we try to build on it every year, and we generally present at this same time every year. Last year, I had Sergeant Turner do it. I think she did a fantastic job. I think she did a better job than I generally do, but Shane said that you've only heard from me three or four times this year already, and you wanted more, so I'm back. But I'll try to keep it brief. In the beginning of this report, I put our organizational chart. I kind of broke it up in two parts, but this was tough to follow this year, and this may not make a lot of sense because we really moved a lot of people around. Last year, as part of the budget process, I proposed that we add a couple of supervisory positions, and we didn't get those positions, but we still tried to adopt to some of those needs. And the need was more first-line supervision and patrol, and that's just because we are so young. And so we took an administrative position and made it a first-line supervisor position and took a position out of detectives and did the same thing. And we got a lot of benefit from that, and we got our younger officers the supervision and guidance that we needed this past year through that. It did affect us administratively and in detectives a little bit, and we functioned a little bit slower and a little bit less efficient and effective in those regards. For example, today, I just, firearms that we seize from the public or take as part of safekeeping, I had a request to get a firearm returned sitting on my desk, and it sat there for two months. And I feel terrible that it sat there that long. It shouldn't sit there that long, but that's just part of the backlog, I think, that we've created for ourselves. But we're one year older this year, and so that's good, and we've got a little bit added maturity in training, and I'll go over some of the training later on. We have thirty-two officers. It might sound like a lot for Kaysville. Seven of those officers are school resource officers. So if you take those out of the mix, we're really a twenty-five-man department if we didn't have all those school officers. But we generally have a little over twenty thousand students in schools during the school year every day, and it's important that we have a presence in that institution. So we have that. We run a pretty lean ship. We have four civilian employees, which is much lower than a standard or probably any other department in our size in the state, certainly. But we have great employees, they do a great job, and we get the work done. Also with that number, we can always count on having a couple injured or off or deployed. For example, right now, we're running a little bit short. We had an officer resign and officer get terminated. We have one on a two-year deployment, and then we had an officer break his shoulder, and we've got another one being deployed this summer. So that'll put us down five from our numbers. So, but those are just the challenges I think any organization runs into, and we're certainly not immune from that. To start off the year, we kind of divided our department up in groups and rewrote our mission statement, our vision statement, our oath of honor, our core values, some of those things that really guide us. And because we're young, and I thought it would be a good time to get some of our officers reinvested in why we do this job because once we figure out why we're doing it, I think it's easier to guide how we do the job, which is very important. Statistic-wise, crime-wise, I think we had a very good year. We were ranked as the third safest in Utah, and I believe right now Utah's the second safest state in the nation. So we have a very safe community in Kaysville. I think a lot of that credit should go to the citizens. We've got a fantastic community, but we've got great officers too. So we handled about ten thousand calls for service, just over ten thousand calls for service. We're on a slight, slow incline over the years generally. One goal we had last year was to bring our response time down a little bit. We brought it down about thirty seconds, and so I was happy with that. I would like to see that continue to go down below the six-minute mark, and right now we're at six-twenty-nine, so I'd like to see a little more room for improvement. But some of that is just, if everybody's tied up on something and a call comes in, then it's just going to sit there, and so sometimes that hurts us.
What?
Oh, go ahead.
Chief, what is your rationale for wanting it? I mean, obviously, you want it to be better, but is there like a national average that you're looking at that, I mean, you feel like six minutes? Seems like you're doing pretty darn good, but...
There's really not a national average or a benchmark, but when you need the police, every minute seems like an eternity, and six minutes probably seems like forever to somebody that really needs us there quick. But another impact you'll all recognize is just the amount of traffic we have on our street, and trying to get down two hundred north sometimes can be challenging at some certain times of the day. And so some of those things impact our ability, and we'll only be able to get that number down so far, but it is a target I'd like to see us get to. A lot of our Part I crimes, our more serious crimes are down, and that was a goal for us and not one that we can always control either, but luckily this past year, like I said, we had a pretty good year. If you look at our police service calls, time analysis, this is pretty typical for us of when our calls come in, and this is some of the challenging times for us to be able to reduce that response time. So one thing we're going to try this year is an online reporting tool where some of our public will be able to just, if it's something that they don't necessarily want or need a phone call or an officer showing up at their door, they'll have the option to report it online. And I think this will do a couple of things for us. It can free up some officers' time and availability, but it can also connect us with a different demographic of our community that, you know, times are changing, and if I needed the police, I would probably want to talk to somebody face-to-face, but not everybody's like that. And we have increasingly people that want to file reports on their cell phone or means like that. And so I think it'll enable us to connect with another part of our demographic that maybe we haven't. The only downside is I do think that the more things we do over the internet or on the phone, you lose a little bit of that personal connection when you're not having a face-to-face conversation, and that's something that law enforcement has struggled with over the years is, you know, we've got to try to keep connecting with our community to keep that trust and create that partnership. Because as you know, thirty-two officers can't resolve all crime and disorder issues in this community. It has to be a partnership with the members of our community. So we do spend a lot of time and a lot of focus working on our community partnerships, and I'm glad Officer Benson stuck around because that's one of her jobs is to facilitate a lot of our communications with our community. And like, she's our public information officer. She handles our social media platforms, which is something I'm not comfortable or good at doing, and thank goodness we have somebody who does a very good job at that. She does such a good job that she is the state FOP, Public Information Officer. They asked her to take that over this year, and she actually writes, she does press stuff for other police departments on her off time.
That's great.
And she contracts out, she really has got kind of a name. I don't want to say nationwide, but there are people that have reached out to me from all over the country to comment about the job she's doing. So she does a great job helping us connect with our public and coordinate our community events and things like that, which in a community like this is a huge deal. It's a big deal for us. Let's see, if you go one more slide. So when we look at our arrest stats, our arrest numbers are up a little bit. This is really not a number that I pay a lot of attention to or make a lot of focus on internally because I don't want officers to feel like they always need to make an arrest or feel that, you know, pressured to make an arrest when maybe they shouldn't. And so although these numbers are here, they're just not a number internally that we really focus on. And we really look for alternatives to arrests. We have our youth court program, which is an alternative to entering a juvenile in the criminal justice system. And I talked about this last year a little bit, but we have a receiving center. It's not a great name, but what it is, it's a partnership with Davis Behavioral and Mental Health. And Davis County was really the pilot program for that where we have a facility put aside that is manned by mental health workers. And if we have somebody that we arrest, say, for a shoplifting or something, we have the option of taking them to that center as long as there's a nexus to drug addiction or mental health, something that influenced that behavior. We have the option of taking them there instead of filing charges because, number one, the jail system doesn't really resolve addiction or mental health issues. And number two, it's really expensive on the taxpayer to take somebody to jail. That's a pretty expensive program. The same goes with if we take somebody to the hospital and commit them on a mental commitment. That's expensive for taxpayers and the person, and it's not always the best solution. But this alternative program that we've got going is really taking off, and although we were the pilot program for it, they're implementing it in other parts of the state, and even other parts in the nation are looking at this. I was on a panel with Chief of Police for Baltimore and the Chief of Police for Louisville Metro, and I was talking about that, and they both called me after and said, "Hey, tell me about that program." And so I think it's something that's really taken off in our country, and it's a great program. But anyway, going to our traffic stats, as you know, traffic is a big issue in Kaysville for us. We didn't intend to grow this large, I think, when they built our streets and designed our community. So traffic's a big issue for us. So we spent a lot of time and emphasis on that. For the last two years in a row, our traffic accidents and injuries are down, and that's something we work hard on, even though in 2020 during the pandemic, nationally, traffic accidents were way up, even though there are a lot fewer people on the road. I think it was attributed to just reckless behavior. And so while the rest of the country's accidents are going up, ours are going down or staying even. But we've got a traffic officer dedicated to that, and he's consistently doing studies and trying to work with our community to keep these down. But it's a difficult job, and it sounds like one that you're going to talk about later today. And the rest of this document just talks about some of our other notable events. You see a list of some of the trainings we've gone to this year. We got a lot of questions about that after the George Floyd incident on, you know, "You guys should be training on this and this and this." And so I thought it would be prudent to put in some of these trainings in here for the public to see and recognize what we do. I should have put in a photograph of what our policies and procedures look like because they're about four inches thick. And so as Val Shoup mentioned, there's a policy for everything, and I think we do a pretty good job with that. But before I completely close out, I want to leave some time for questions. But we do have Jennifer Winchester back here, and as part of her grant, we have two grants that she's going to speak about, and she needs to speak about them too as part of her grant requirements. We actually, out of our thirty-six employees, nine of them are either on a grant or some kind of funding from another source. So we seek those out. But Jennifer, do you want to come up and speak for a few minutes? It looks like she's got Walter.
Good dog.
He's going to be my emotional support dog right now. Thank you guys for letting me come and speak tonight. As you mentioned, part of our grant is ensuring that you guys understand the importance of the programs that they're providing funding for should the funding go away at some point. So if we could go to the next slide. Before I go into numbers or what exactly the programs that we get grant funding for, I want to give you kind of a case example to follow along with. I want to give you kind of a case example to follow along with. Um, so the grants that we have are a VOCA grant and a VAU grant. Um, the VOCA grant is what funds my position as a victim advocate. Um, the VAU grant funds a detective position who focuses on sexual assault, domestic violence, stalking, persons-type crimes. Um, it funds his position fifty percent, it funds my position seventy percent. Um, part of that has allowed us to really be able to focus on crimes that are truly impactful for people in our community. Um, in this case example that, um, I'm gonna talk with you guys about, um, this is a victim who I've actually started working with, um, probably four, three years ago, um, who initially, she did not want to speak with me, um, we arrested her husband on domestic violence. Um, since 2017, there have been thirty-two incidents of domestic violence in her home that we actually responded to. That probably doesn't account for the numbers that we didn't make it there. Um, this past year, she had sixteen incidents of domestic violence, um, between April and September, leading up to his last arrest. Um, in August, he had three domestic violence incidents. In September, we responded out seven times to his home and this is each time where he's been arrested, gone back, violated, gone back and violated again. Um, so if it works, she actually, um, wrote a victim impact statement and said that it would be okay if I shared it with you guys just to kind of hear how it's impacted her. Are you able to play that?
Joe was released from jail the day before, so he was angry and spiraling like he had done many times in the past. While he was in jail, I was approved to put a new deadbolt lock on my front door to keep him out. I walked in after dropping off our daughter at school and something fell off. I hesitated, but then locked my door. Less than ten minutes later, I heard tires screeching around the corner. I knew he was coming. I ran for my phone, locked myself in the bathroom and called for help. I remember hearing my own voice shaking and all I could say to the nine-one-one operator was, "Joe is here," as I listened to him kicking in my front door. Luckily, the police arrived before he was able to get to me. The abuse I just described spans over a series of weeks, but the abuse has been ongoing for years in our relationship. Today, I'd like to provide you with a tiny bit of insight into the abuse I have faced and how it has changed my life. Throughout the relationship, I was alienated from family and friends due to the abuse and frustration when I made excuses or rationalized Joe's behavior. I was cut off socially and I was always mindful of how long I was away from home. I was cautious about answering Joe's calls immediately. If I didn't respond immediately, I would be chastised and accused of infidelity. Joe treated me like I had a hidden agenda. I have a cosmetic makeup bag explicitly purchased to hide the results of bad days. I've taught my children to avoid repeating things they have seen and heard at home. I've compared his episodes of abuse to mental and physical disabilities to excuse his behavior. The problem always remained. Joe doesn't see or refuses to acknowledge his abusive behaviors and doesn't see the need to be better. I thought I was strong enough to help him. I believed I was triumph in the end, but my life turned into a broken record. I always was to blame. He would tell me that reporting his behavior to the police or me saying something about his actions and behaviors was the problem and I just needed to shut my mouth and not say anything. My belongings and valuable possessions have been broken and taken away from me as punishment for wronging him. I've been verbally, emotionally and physically abused with the only consistent explanation being that I deserve it. The last straw for me was when Joe started attacking my son. I will not lose my son for Joe. And the events that exploded over that weekend, I mentioned in the beginning of this letter, were his reaction to me standing up for my son. I've spent years fighting a battle I will not and cannot ever win or even solve and I've tried, but for mine and my children's safety and well-being, this is a battle I no longer wish to fight. I fully believe if Joe had made it through that door that day, I would have been on the news as yet another person being killed during a domestic violence event. I feel foolish for defending him and believing in him as long as I did. I thought I could make it better. I've lied to my family and to myself to protect him. I want peace. I don't want to continue to worry about whether or not the next time he's gonna take away my last breath and if my kids will no longer have a mommy to protect them.
Um, so that, um, was her statement in his most recent, um, hearing, um, where he was, um, while he was in jail during this point, he, um, sent letters to try and intimidate her to back down during the case. Um, our detective, our VAU detective was able to, um, collect those. We've built a relationship with her now where she feels safe enough to come to us and let us know. Um, in these cases, unfortunately, um, he did not get present time, but he is in jail till the end of the month. This started last year, so he's got, he will be released at the end of the month. However, um, she is in a good place now and, um, due to some of the services we've been able to offer her, she's not planning to go back to him this time. Um, this is one of our more, the harder cases, but it's not, it's not new or anything different. I often hear the same struggles that she had, um, when talking to victims of domestic violence, sex assault. It's, it's very common here in Kays-, Kaysville. Um, we'll go to the next slide. So I just wanted you guys to kind of have that overview as I go through the funding and, and things of that nature. So as I mentioned, the VAU grant is a grant that, um, funds our VAU detective. He is funded part-time right now. We did lose some funding. Um, he went from full-time funding to part-time funding this past year, but he's funded through, um, the end of this year. Uh, we will be applying for additional funding, um, and there, uh, the VAU grant or the VAU was just repassed, um, in legislation, so we should be able to at least get another fifty percent, we're hoping. Um, in 2021, he was able to investigate, um, input time into ninety-six cases. Um, thirteen of those cases had multiple victimizations. Um, we had fifty adult sexual assaults this year. Um, we had cases with multiple victims. It's been a hard year for sexual assaults. Um, so it, it, he's been able to provide, uh, a lot more attention to these cases, um, based on that funding, so it's been good. Uh, next slide please. Um, so the VOCA grant that I'm funded under, um, allows me to provide, um, support right now for all victims of crimes, not just domestic violence or sexual assault, but, you know, um, we've helped, you know, people who, um, hit and runs, if somebody, um, if there's a death, things of that nature, I'm able to respond out on scene with their officers. Um, right now, I am seventy percent funded through that grant. Um, we were able to obtain the funding to get Walter, um, and so that would help to pay for him this past year. Um, I would average anywhere between eleven hundred victims per year. Um, my numbers are a little bit different than how the police department tracks them. I take cases, um, for, that don't always see the police side of it. They can come to me and still request resources and things of that nature. Um, direct services, um, are kind of what I'll go over next and that's actually what I do with clients. So, next slide please. Um, referring back to this, uh, victim that I told you guys about, some of the, um, things that we've been able to offer her, um, is immediate crisis response. So I'll go, I've gone out on scene with our officers after these things have taken place. Um, I've been able to help transport her to court hearings, um, medical appointments. We were able to recently work with some programs and get her rent paid for a few months while she lost that second income. Um, help with police updates on cases, prosecution updates on where her cases are. Um, she's been able to acquire mental health services, um, help with individual services like, uh, she had to take off work a few times because he disconnected her internet so she couldn't work. Um, so, um, it's a very wide focus on these cases. I often have, uh, victims who are with me for a pretty long time. Um, next slide please. Um, so this slide just talks about how, um, having this grant has helped. Um, basically, we get better cooperation with victims, um, when you are able to have an advocate start out with them at the beginning of the es-, uh, investigation. A lot of times, they feel lost, don't understand the process, so I'm able to be there and kind of help them. Um, while the detective is working the case, I'm able to kind of ensure he has time to work on his case and I can answer the victim's questions and make sure they're taken care of. Um, we've had a victim who worked with a different city who has said, "I gave up on contacting the police because I didn't feel like they cared." Um, and she felt much better after working with our office. Um, uh, when I was, reduction in workload for officers I talked about, uh, these are just, um, kind of notes that I've gotten over the past year, uh, from victims who have, you know, talked about our services. We can go to the next one, I really don't like to have that one in there. But, um, and then there is Walter. Um, Walter has, um, attained his, um, therapy certification for a ser-, therapy dog. He's also obtained a service dog certification, um, which means that he's able to not only provide comfort, but he provides deep pressure therapy. Um, so the pictures you see of Officer Benson are, um, what he will actually go into interview rooms with us when we have sex assault or domestic violence or any victims really and he can go in and provide that pressure and kind of help ease that anxiety for people. Um, he just fully was certified, but he's, so far, he's helped twelve victims, well, thirteen yesterday, so. Um, and yeah, that's it. Any questions? He's a little tired today.
Does anyone have questions?
I just wanted to say, applaud the work that you do. This is such an important issue and I think a lot of folks that, uh, go through horrible situations of violence and abuse, uh, they have trust issues and things like that. And this really, um, kind of fills a, a much-needed, um, a gap within our, our law enforcement, our community to help these folks. So thank you for what you do and, and, uh, that's a beautiful dog there too. I want to come down and pet it.
You're more than welcome. He, he's a big attention seeker, so. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
We had a little bit of playtime today.
And I, I'll just follow up by saying, I think that she is, uh, the best victim advocate in the state. She's the only one that's certified through the FBI's Elevate Program and, uh, we, we really lucked out when we got her and, uh, you know, we, if you're arrested, you get an attorney to help you navigate the criminal justice system. We have prosecutors that help the police navigate it, but if you're a victim, uh, it's a complicated system. You don't have anybody unless you have somebody like Jennifer, an advocate, that can help you navigate the system and, uh, sometimes explain police protocol to people that don't understand why something happened or why it's moving this, uh, this direction. And she, she really downplayed a lo-, a lot of what she does. Uh, she's helped us change some of our, how we do things in the police department because, uh, I think for a long time, police departments were very, uh, suspect-centered, so we learn how to interrogate somebody and how to interview somebody, um, but she's brought kind of a, a victim-centered approach, a trauma-informed approach to what we do so that we can better obtain information from victims, uh, which I grew up never really thinking about or knowing about or knowing how to do it for much of my career. So she's, she's really done a great job helping transform a lot of, uh, what we do. So I appreciate all of your support on her program and our other programs. Uh, are there any questions, uh, that, or concerns that I can, I can answer or address?
I just wanted to say, I was really impressed with some of your statistics. Some of the crimes that we've had in Kaysville, especially car burglaries, are way down. I, and that's very impressive to me. I just want to know. And I, and I think that's from the patrol guys being out there at night.
We, yeah, I appreciate that, Councilmember Black. And we did have our, uh, vehicle thefts went way up, uh, they went way up statewide. In fact, I think Salt Lake City was number one in the nation and that's, that's something that we, you know, we've got definitely some work to do, but, uh, we'll keep at it and do what we can.
I think the year before, the car burglaries were so heavy that it was in every neighborhood and this year I've not heard the same. I, I see your stats are way down and that, that's, that's great. It's impressive. It's impressive to see a lot of your crimes down.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, do you feel, um, with some of the domestic abuse, child neglect and maybe sexual assault, you know, the, do you see those numbers or believe those up to like the last couple of years? You know, I don't see the previous. My concern, you know, has, had the, the COVID lockdown, you know, people's been more time enclosed with family caused those to go up.
I think so. I think these are, these are numbers we're seeing across the, across the board, across the nation and, um, I think they are to some degree, um, influenced by COVID and how we've changed what we're doing.
Yeah, I've been home, my wife is trying to beat me just to get me out of the house or something, yeah. So, I didn't call you, but, so, all right.
Hey, Chief Oberg, quick question about the narcotics seizures.
Yes.
Did any of those take place on I-15 or were those off of I-15 and mainly within our city?
Um, you know, the, the narcot-, narcotics stats that I put on here, these are done by our, our local task force, so Kaysville has an officer assigned to this task force and, um, really what their, their intent is to disrupt, uh, drug trafficking organizations, major organizations, um, because we found that if we, we just enforce at a street level, oftentimes we're arresting, um, users and I don't know that that's solving anything really. Um, but, so, so what they're really trying to do is disrupt drug trafficking organizations and I don't know the location on, on most of these, uh, seizures because it's kind of a, you know, they kind of keep it on the DL and, um, uh, a lot of what they do is, uh, wiretaps and, and things like that to disrupt these, these large organizations that, that's, you know, send their pipelines into Utah and Davis County.
Yeah, I know a lot of, um, looking at reports over the years with, uh, Highway Patrol, a lot of drugs going up and down our freeways, um, but it'd be interesting to see, like, particularly if, uh, drug seizures are taking place off of the freeway and kind of compare that year to year to see kind of how we're doing. I'm just wondering if that would be a, a possibility.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I can, I can work into that and, uh, our officers have seen a lot more, uh, they've been taking a lot more drugs out of their traffic stops that they're doing. Um, I've noticed a huge increase really that, just in 2022, these last four months. Um, and those are, uh, kind of referred to as interdiction seizures. Um, and these other ones are actual investigative seizures through, you know, disrupting drug ta-, trafficking organizations. But, but yeah, I will, I will, uh, look to add something like that for our next year. Absolutely. Thank you.
Did, uh, Chief, with the raises, have you noticed any difference as far as less, less clamoring to leave?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I had an opportunity to sit down with every officer and talk about increases and, um, talked about and use that as an opportunity to talk about expectations and return on the investment to the community and, um, it, you know, increased, uh, it talked about how hard it was for the city and the sacrifices that some of the other departments, uh, may have to make and what the expectation and the scrutiny was going to be on them individually and on us as a department. And I think those were very well received and, um, wh-, what I'm seeing from my seat is, uh, the work being put in and, uh, I, I think you'll be pleased with our report next year as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief. We really appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, now we are moving on to Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Does anyone have any conflicts to declare? No? Okay, sounds good. Seeing none, we'll move on to consent items. Yeah, we, we can do that if you want to pull it up and I can tell them. I've got a list if you want.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, consent item A and C and remove item B only to read the, uh, advisory committee members' names.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Councilmember Oaks.
Aye.
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 Okay, that was unanimous, all right. I, the, uh, recently, Kaysville City passed a ramp ordinance to, uh, well, passed, passed a ramp tax and so we put together a ramp committee and I will read the names of the members of this ramp committee. Um, the Parks and Rec- and I will read the names of the members of this ramp committee. The Parks and Rec person will be Cole Stevens. Rec Superintendent Chris Hi will serve on the committee. The Kaysville Community Theater representative is Laurie Story. The Historic Preservation Representative is, just a second, I'll grab that. The Out Large members are Richard Heath, Chaz Leach, Chris Snell, Fernando Morales, and Marcy Handy. And then the Historic Preservation Committee Member Representative is Brittany Brummer. So.
Thank you for all of you who, I mean, it was pretty awesome, wasn't it?
It was. Yeah, we had quite a few people apply to be part of that committee, and we're excited for them to make recommendations to council, who will then make decisions on how that money is spent.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of the ramp advisory committee members as stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Councilmember Blackham.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the first action item. It is Action Item 6A, Preliminary Plat Approval for the Bourne Estates Planned Unit Planned Residential Unit Development Subdivision located at 1742 West Phillips Street for Robert and Linda Bourne.
Mayor, it is Melinda that will make a presentation. But if you don't mind, just for the benefit of the public and just a reminder to the council, for the action items tonight and also the work item, we don't have any public hearings tonight. So I wondered if people might have come here anticipating an opportunity to speak. There is no opportunity to speak there for these items, but I hope everybody's interested in in the discussion and the council addressing these items.
We did have a sign up sheet for public
Comment.
comment for the action items. And we do have people that signed up for this.
Okay, okay.
So.
I had forgotten whether we put those together or not. And I was asking Mr. Mills, and we couldn't remember. So.
So we do have people signed up to speak. So if that's all right.
Have they been gathered already?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Excuse me. Go ahead, Melinda. Thanks.
Okay, Melinda?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as on the agenda, we have a subdivision before you this evening. This was heard at the last Planning Commission meeting and was recommended approval with a vote of seven zero. The subdivision process, just for those who may not be familiar with that, when zoning is in place, there are certain requirements that need to be met for a property to be subdivided. And once that property meets all those requirements, which are already set forth in our ordinances, we take the subdivision plat to called a preliminary plat to Planning Commission and then to the city council for approval. The next step in that process after approval is what's called final plat. Final plat only goes to the Planning Commission. So this item before you will be the only time that you will see this. Just to give everyone an idea of where this is, it's located over on Phillips Street. Right now, the property is being used for a single family residence. Last year, the property was rezoned to R1 LD. And so what we've done with staff, with our city engineer, planning staff, is we have gone through and looked at this preliminary plat that's proposed here. And it does meet all of the requirements set forth in code. There were some minor corrections here on the plat that you can see that needed to be changed. Because of that, the city engineer wanted to just have the preliminary plat approval. You can do those concurrently, but he wanted to see the final plat before those changes before we approved that. So we're just recommending the preliminary or processing the preliminary approval at this point. If approved, the preliminary plat is valid for a period of one year. So the next phase in this process would be for them to submit their final plat application, and that would need to go to the Planning Commission within one year of the approval. To just give a little bit more context of the subdivision, it is a five lot subdivision. As I mentioned, there is one single family home existing that will remain on Lot One. The other five or four lots will be subdivided off of a private road. And the lots range between 17,000 square feet and 22,000 square feet, which does meet the minimum requirement of lot sizes for the R1 LD district. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Thank you. Well, we do, we did give people the opportunity to sign up for public comment. We don't have anyone signed up to speak. So councilmembers, do you have any questions?
This is easy.
Oh, do we have the property owner here?
The applicant.
The applicant. Would you would you like to come up and and speak? Kind of tell us a little bit about this? We'd like to give you that opportunity.
I don't fight her for that.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Were you at the Masters?
I've been there three times.
Denied.
I'll get you on.
Okay, I've accepted.
Anyway, what we've done, we've lived there for about 55 years. We're in the number one, the number one plot. And so all our kids were born and raised there. All right? And so we decided what we do is break that out and give each one of our kids a half acre. They've struggled to try and find a lot that they could afford and build a home. Very difficult. So we made the decision to help them out. And so we've met with the city, we met with the Planning Commission, and they've been very, very helpful by our side. And so we've got, we've met with an attorney, going to do the HOAs, then prepare those for us. And anyway, we just want to proceed, and we'd love to have the kids be our neighbors. We have not received one complaint from any of the neighbors. In fact, we've been encouraged by what we've received. So anyway, I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So I've, how in the world do you get it so your kids want to live next to each other as well as you? I'm impressed. Well done.
You know, I've got
No, I'm just, I don't don't answer a thing. I'm just
You know, it's a good
I'm impressed.
I've got 32 years in banking, in IT. And I will tell you, we did not go into this thinking we weren't going to have some problems along the way. And so what we said, what I decided personally, is I just hope the positives outweigh the negatives. And so far, they certainly have.
That's great.
Well done.
You know, and we're planning, the kids are planning on building as soon as they can. And I have one daughter, and son-in-law lives in Augusta, Georgia. And that's how I get on. And so it'll be, they have a five year plan to get back.
That's great.
Okay. So any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Councilmembers.
We can't hear back there at all. We cannot hear.
Okay, so maybe people just need to put the microphone closer. So when you speak, when you do have an opportunity, those of you that signed up, put the microphone close, okay? Okay, councilmembers, do we have any questions?
No, we're good.
Okay. Seeing no questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat approval for the Bourne Estates Planned Resident Unit Development PRUD subdivision located at 1742 West Phillips Street is the Robert and Linda Bourne Estates Family Estates. I added that part. Actually, just Robert and Linda Bourne.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to 6B, Consideration of a Development Agreement and Request to Rezone, 478 South Main Street from R18 Single Family Residential District to RM Multiple Family Residential District for Mark Lund and Kelly White. Melinda?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start briefly with answering the question we often get is, why are we here tonight? Why are we considering this application? Law requires us to have a process for people to make changes on property that they own. So in this case, the applicant has submitted a rezone application. They paid a $400 fee. And then we are obligated to process that application. The state law also requires through that process that at least one public hearing be held. That was done at the Planning Commission on February 10. I'll go a little bit more through that in future slides. And then also wanted to just take, oh, where's all the, okay, that just is out of order. I also wanted to take a minute to just help the public understand what the role of staff is. So aside from processing applications, what we do as staff is we look at specifically to a rezone, we look at the general plan. We see what the goals and policies are in the general plan. We look at the facts that surround the property, and then we present those facts to the staff. So I wanted to go through just a few items here that will lay out some of the facts surrounding the rezone application and some of the opportunities that are available. So Mark Lund and Kelly White own the property. They purchased it and closed on it last fall. It's a half acre site, just over 24,000 square feet. It's an undeveloped parcel previous to previous to their ownership, there has been a contract with the city to have a community garden. The zoning as it is right now is R18. The current density then allowed with the 24,000 square feet would be three single family dwellings. There is a caveat to that in that our R18 code also allows for conditional uses of twin homes. And so there is a good chance that even left at R18, the density for this entire parcel would be six units. The proposed density with the RM zone also is six units. With the 24,000 square feet that the lot has, the density, just with the zoning, would allow up to eight units. But going back to the Planning Commission meetings, the Planning Commission felt after hearing comments from the citizens that eight units was too much. And so we have come back with a modified zoning request and a development agreement to limit that to six units. Just a few shots of the property here. This is looking towards the west from Main Street. It is on the corner of Main Street and 475 South. Here's a view looking north from 475 South. And then an aerial shot that shows kind of a zoomed in part or zoomed in view of the property. Here is an aerial shot with the property zoomed out so you can kind of get a better context of the immediate surrounding, what's there in the neighborhood. This next slide includes a zoning map. The star there in the middle is the location of the property. And you can see that within, you know, in near distance, there are several other zones that are in place, including the public use where the high school is located. We have the residential or the diverse residential diverse district of the downtown area. We have some R2. And then to the south, we also have an HCR, a healthcare district. So what I want to go through next is what's contained in the 2019 general plan. The public and the council is aware that we have been through a process the last couple of years to adopt an updated general plan. That has not been adopted yet. And so I, it was appropriate for me to reference the currently adopted general plan, which is the 2019 general plan. So that the general plan lays out several goals for the community. And one of those goals that fits within this application is that Kaysville should be a primarily residential community. The RM zone that the applicant selected and applied for is considered a residential zone. So that does fit within that particular goal. There's also a goal that talks about growth and development and having diversified and adaptable zoning based on changing market conditions. We all know that there has been a large increase in property values in housing across the state, a shortage of housing. And so looking at other zones apart from single family does provide that diversity and adaptability to market conditions. The, there's also a housing goal that talks about where appropriate locations for medium densities would be. That's another thing that I did want to impart with, when we talk about densities, we generally have three categories. We have a low density, a medium density, and a high density. I would consider this townhome, this RM zone, as a medium density. High density, you'd start getting into, you know, more than 15, 16 per acre. But this, this would be a medium density. So the general plan states that east of I-15, which this is, we should consider medium densities along our major corridors, such as 200 North and Main Street. And again, the property is located on Main Street. It also states that the majority of housing should be attached or detached. Townhomes are considered attached housing units. And the goal also suggests that the city would want to provide a variety of housing choices. So diversifying that from the existing single family zone to a multifamily zone does give a variety. And it also says that we should consider putting three to six unit structures dispersed throughout the city. So that does fit within the goals that the general plan has outlined. I want to talk just a minute about our plan for additional moderate income housing. I believe it was in 2018 that the state passed a requirement for all cities to include in their general plan an element for moderate income housing. And I also believe that the reason why, and I've been with Kaysville City since January, so all of this took place prior to my being here. But I believe the reason why we are labeling this the 2019 general plan is because that was when we adopted the section to meet that state code requirement to have our moderate income housing element added into the plan. And that calls for a few different goals that felt or that also fit within this zoning application. First of all, the moderate income housing plan says that there's a deficiency and that 15% more of our housing should be should fit within moderate income. It also suggests that the council should consider zoning properties to a variety of zones, including RM. It suggests that we should permit multiple unit structures in single family zones. That does go back to what I said at the beginning, that this property zoning is R18, but again, with a conditional use permit, they could have a twin home on each of those lots. So but multiple unit structures within single family zoning is also something the council should consider. It also suggests the council should consider permitting less costly size design of materials and construction of housing, and then rezone for densities necessary to assure the protection of moderate income housing. I did have a resident ask me yesterday, trying to get context of what does that mean? Yesterday, I also attended an hour and a half plus session that the league put together on moderate income housing. And my takeaway from that training session and what I informed the resident is that this type of a project fits within what the state is asking the city council to do. So the legislation that was passed this year, we will be coming back to the council, and we'll need to add in more elements to the general plan to meet the additional moderate income housing requirements. But this is what we have right now in the books. So there is evidence in and policies contained within the current general plan to support this application. Next, I just want to go through, the applicant also submitted a proposed concept of six town units with six unit townhomes with their application. It shows those facing 475 South and then the driveway located on the west end of the property. They also submitted a few renderings. I'll go through those fairly quickly. And then I wanted to talk just a little bit about the differences between the two zones that currently zoned R18 and then the application for RM. The height requirements or limitations in the zone are the same. So no structure could be more than 30 feet. The front setback The front setbacks are also the same at 25 feet. One difference between the two zones is that in R18, you only have to have an eight-foot side yard setback. With the RM, based on a six-unit townhome, the side yard setback, at least on the west side, would have to be 16 feet. So there would be an additional eight feet of setback. Because the, because it's a corner unit or a corner lot, the side yard setback off of Main Street would have to be 20 feet. The rear setback is the same for both zones. It's 15 feet. And then, as I said, the, the corner setback is 20 feet. Looks like we have a duplicate slide in there. So going back to the Planning Commission meeting, we did hold a public hearing on February 10th. In preparation for that meeting, we sent out a mailer notice to 50 different property owners within a 500-foot radius of the property. And that is a requirement that we have in our ordinance to send those public notices. State code requires us to do 300 feet, but the city council elected to go above and beyond. And so we noticed at 500 feet. We did have a lot of public comments that came forward at that meeting and the subsequent meeting. I want to go through those really briefly. One of the main comments out of specifically the February 10th meeting was concerns about traffic. And when you look at the options for developing the property, the RM zone would lead to the best-case scenario as far as traffic because you would have one driveway and one point of ingress, an egress. So across the board, you're really going to have the same amount of density. But with R18, you would have three driveways, three points for vehicular conflict versus one. So that was a conclusion that we as staff looked at and the applicant also looked at. And it does make, from a traffic and safety standpoint, it does make more sense to have a singular access point to the entire property versus multiple access points. Parking was also mentioned. That's addressed in the development agreement. We had concerns about increased density, impacts to the neighborhood character, high tenant turnover if they were to be rental units. Again, concerns about safety that really related a little bit more to crime versus traffic. There was a petition that was submitted against the rezone at the February 10th meeting. That position, or that petition I do want to state was submitted before the application was amended to include the development agreement and limit that from eight units to six. There was also concerns about an underground stream that's been commented that exists under the property. That would be something that would be addressed through the development process and not necessarily with the zoning. So if there, if there is a water level in the property when they go in to do soil samples and determine what type of foundation or what they could do, or they start excavating, that would come to the surface and they would have to deal with that at a later point. But it would be addressed. So now that brings us to the development agreement. Again, the Planning Commission heard the public comments, the feedback at the meeting, and asked staff to go back and work with the applicant and look at some other zoning or zoning options or limiting the density. I did sit down with the developer and we had a conversation about some of those other zoning options that were available. Specifically, the Planning Commission mentioned the R2 zone, which would allow for twin homes. So again, a subdivision, it could, it would allow for three lots, two twin homes per lot, the density would be the same. So the outcome, again, with the conversation of the developer, they felt that the trade-off of having three separate units would be kind of maybe pleasing aesthetically or fit in better with the neighborhood, but the trade-off would be the safety. And again, those additional points of conflict with two more driveways at a total of three versus the one on the RM zone. So they chose to stick with the RM application and agreed to limit the development to six units. They do want to put forward a townhome product. The code requires a minimum of 10 parking spots, but in the development agreement, they have agreed to provide a minimum of 12. We also discussed and added into the development agreement having some buffering items to the residential, the single-family residential that exists to the east and the north of the property, which we would do with fencing and some trees. And then they also committed to having an architectural design to, to fit the existing neighborhood, which would be Craftsman or farmhouse style. So again, at the February 10th meeting, we did hold the public hearing. Planning Commission requested we come back with a development agreement. We brought that back to the Planning Commission on March 10th, presented them with what I have just gone through you with this evening. And they did recommend approval of the zone change with the development agreement and the vote on that was 7-0. If there's any questions the council has, I'm more than happy to answer them. We also do have the applicant here this evening and they would appreciate some time to speak about their application, too.
Right. Thank you, Melinda. We appreciate that. We would like to invite the applicant up if you'd like to speak.
Is it okay if we both join, etc.?
Yeah, just speak into your mic.
Yeah. I'm Mark Lund, one of the applicants.
I'm Kelly White.
Thanks for taking the time to allow us to speak to you today. We appreciate everyone being here. Appreciate all the neighbors that have come here as well. We, we're excited about the opportunity to present this. Do you have any questions for us before we speak? No questions? Okay, well, we, we feel like we've, we've, you know, going through this process, we've learned a lot in speaking with neighbors and speaking with the staff and speaking with planning and zoning as well. We appreciate the feedback that we've received. We appreciate working with them. They've been great to work with. You know, as far as what we're trying to do, we want it to be clear that we want something that's going to be really nice in the neighborhood. We're not trying to do something that would not be good for the neighborhood. And with all the concerns that have been addressed, we've listened. We feel like the development agreement has been, there's been concessions made. I don't know if you want to go through any of those concessions, but I think you know what we've conceded on, what we've wanted to do. And really, it's, it's about listening and making, making it work for both of us, for the, for the, you know, for us as, as the property owners and for the neighborhood and for all the people that will be affected by this. So we feel like it's a great opportunity to provide some moderate income housing for Kaysville. We feel like it'll be a nice place to live. People will want to live there and it can be more affordable than, than what we could provide. A big reason why we, we chose to stick with RM versus changing that was because of, you know, a lot of the concerns that we received were about safety. We feel like RM allows us to, to make this a safer project, to make it better for the neighborhood with that one driveway, as she's mentioned. I think Melinda's done a great job of going over those, those points. We also have another rendering from our engineer and architect that allowed us to fit actually 18 to 20 parking spaces. So we designed one with the garages in the back instead of being up front. And then that allows for more parking to be around the edge of the property as well. So not only will we do 10, but 18 to 20 is an option as well. We've agreed to 12, but we want as much parking as we can to keep it safe and to keep people not parking on the street. We asked if we could, you know, redline the street or make that a place where people can't park with one entrance down across the street from where the church entrance is. And we were told that had to be done by the police chief, so it's not something that we could, we could put in a development agreement. We feel like, you know, this fits the general plan. This fits what staff has recommended. This fits what planning and zoning has recommended. And so, you know, if you have any other questions about that, we'd love to, to answer any of those questions. We want it to be as, as open and we want to explain everything that we, we intend to do and, and just have you know that our intentions are to do something nice and to make it great for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Yeah, so, so what we'll do is we'll allow you to, to finish your, you know, your presentation. And then we'll go to public comment and then we'll go to council questions. And during that discussion, sometimes often, we'll ask you to come back up.
Okay, thank you. We're, we keep being referred to as developers. We're property owners. This isn't something we do all the time. So appreciate you being patient with us on this, so thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, now let me explain how public comment works, just to remind you again. When you come up, please state your name and your address. We'll have a timer, so you do get your three minutes. It's not a discussion, so we will not respond to your questions. You'll be able to present whatever you'd like to present and that's how that will go. Please no clapping or cheering or, let's be respectful to everyone that's here. We appreciate you coming. We're excited to hear from you. I have 10 people signed up, actually 12 people, but we'll let 10 people speak. So we'll go in this order. Mark Jensen, Jamie Fox, Brian Benyon, June, and then Wenfei. Okay, and then Doug Haskell, Ross Evansen, Lorene Starkey, J.C. Johnson, and Doug Foster. Okay? So when you come up, please speak into the microphone, state your name, state your address, and then I'll start the timer.
Hi, Mark Jensen, 407 South, 225 East, just around the corner from this lot. I just have a couple items I want to bring up. The first one being, I'm a hydraulics hydrology nerd. My background, civil engineering, I have a master's. I taught watershed modeling at the University of Utah. Seeing the slope of this land and having dug out people's basements in this exact area myself after floods from Lake Fiesta, I do have concerns with the slope on this piece of this property, quite frankly. And to the point, you increase density, you increase impervious surfaces. That's just how this works, right? It's just a fact, right? So if we're increasing density, you're going to increase impervious surfaces. The geek in me goes, take on the challenge. Let's do this, right? I can solve this problem. And we can, right? Little bit of money, we can, we can get this thing solved. But I just want the council to keep that in their, their, the back of their heads as they think, think through this rezone, that you will increase impervious surface on this piece of ground. The second point I want to bring up, and this one, sorry, my mind went a little bit blank, is, is the, I apologize. Is really the, the fact that, having been a city engineer, and this kind of goes back to the previous point and to the next point. I've sat on people's couches after they've been flooded. And because I held them to, the developer to a standard and said, look, as long as you put in these measures and the grading looks this way, at building permit, we'll sign the building permit, right? Well, then someone, whoever, landscape or whoever landscaper comes in, changes the grade, floods the neighbor, they're crying to me and I'm saying, I held them to a standard and now you get to sue your neighbor. You turn this into townhomes, who do you sue, right? You can't go to the developer. They're out, right? So I'm just saying, that is a problem. But it also goes to the, the second point of, is, is, once, we're, we have inflation that's going out of control. I think we're on the edge of another possible. I hope, I hope for this developer, they can, they can get their money out and get out, right? I really do. However, if that does not happen, I dealt with at the tail end of a recession, trying to get the, the cogs rolling again. And we made concessions. And I don't blame the city council and the mayor. I would have probably done the same thing. We made all sorts of concessions to get that RM zone to whatever they could do to make money off it, right? So with those things, I just want to say, thanks for your time, but I do think that there are some concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. If you'll hold your applause, that would be great. Thank you.
My name is Jamie Fox. I live at 590 South Main Street. I've lived there for 30 years and I've taught at Davis High for 36 years as a teacher and a driver's instructor, driving instructor. We're really trying to help kids learn how to drive safely. I'm here on behalf, I got a little worked up, learning of the number of people who will be living on this corner, 475. And I started telling my story about how there's a lot of distractions on this corner with the high school where it's at. We have a lot of kids and the, they go to Davis, the teenagers that go there. And I told the story how I remember one of our neighbor girls come into my health class I teach and she's just breathing heavy. I'm like, what the heck? What are you doing? She said, we just tried to cross the street, right there, right there, exactly on that corner, 475. And what they, what they did is they got together and they said, let's get together. We're going to cross the street. And I've always, I look at this as like the Frogger, the video game Frogger. Have you guys played that? Heard of that? Yeah, that's what that corner is like there, no question. And it's amazing that nobody really has gotten hit and killed on that corner yet. Sometimes I just think that it's just a matter of time. But there's a lot of distractions on this corner. Anyway, she came in and she said, we made it across, but she goes, we all ran away because all of a sudden the car stops for me and I hear this boom, boom, boom. And there was this fender bender after fender bender from these kids running across the street. They will not go down to the crosswalk. I'm not speaking for all of them, but they're teenagers and teenagers are always right. And they're, they're going to cross the street where it's faster for them. They will risk their lives to get across that street. There's accident, so that's my story on there. There's so many people that use this corner. KJH is extremely heavy at the 3:30 or 3 o'clock mark. Davis High School, Columbia Elementary. It is a great place for elementary or for the schools. There's high-risk traffic there. There's the student parking that's adjacent from that same corner. So you have a lot of kids coming in and out. Novice drivers. Davis High has nearly 200, they're pushing 200, 2,200 kids there with a faculty and staff of 175. You have football games, soccer up there, that same exit and entrance. At night, there's no street lights there. In the daytime, there's no school zone to zone, to slow down traffic. My solution is police presence, but they say there's not enough cops to, to be out there. We do have some updated data of that, of the accidents that happened there. I have 11 seconds. But in conclusion, that corner specifically affects our neighborhood directly. This is a street we look at every day. I feel I need to speak up for the safety of our children, your children, somebody and the neighborhood. It's priority because the corner is about safety, not about money. We love our neighborhood. We have already, did I knock this off?
No.
Well, it automatically turns off at three minutes. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. We have, we love our neighborhood. We have already lost a dear friend to the Main Street and have felt the devastating impact of in our lives that will be scarred forever. Please help. Please, R1, less is more at 475 South Main. Preserve our hometown, look, please. Please do not gamble our lives with a neighbor's school, city, and this corner. We need to make sure we have clarity and a vision on this corner. We've had many accidents there. As a neighborhood, please use traffic engineers to minimize the impact and protect people using this corner. Please minimize street parking. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you. My name is Brian Benyon, 475 South, 250 East. I've been asked to address some comments from the group and some of my own thoughts. Last time I was here, I had a brief moment to speak and I mentioned that the zoning regulations that the city has adopted currently and the ones that should have been adopted if the pandemic hadn't pushed it down the road a little bit are there to protect the investments and of the people in this town, including the applicant, as, but also more importantly, the residents that own the homes in the neighborhood. I'd like to ask, you know, have the council consider the questions on the number of the driveways in an R2 zone, if that was possible. There's two R2 developments north of this site that have a single drive with very successful structures that are allowed to have ownership as well as rental. And they are well blended into the fabric of our community. A large six-unit apartment complex, connected building, would be an over A large six-unit apartment complex, connected building, uh, would be an oversized shoebox on this corner. We're seeing one built now, uh, with the accounting firm that's building on Main Street. It's starting to tone itself down as it got the black shingles on the roof, but that is a big tall structure for that lot. There are apartments further north of this site that are all rentals that are not being maintained from the owner, uh, over the years. I think they've been there for about twenty, twenty-five years, and they're fully rented. And they're always rented because of the demand, and the landlord has very little incentive to replant a tree when it's knocked down by an east wind or maintain their property in a good sight and manner. So there are concerns that a full rental apartment complex in our neighborhood could, down the road, fall into disrepair. I also would like to suggest that the applicant is swinging for the fence with an RM rezone. They are hoping that they can do what they'd like to do under the provisions and the recommendations from the staff, but it also opens up a bowl of problems with other conditional uses that could become part of this property, including daycare facilities, businesses, and government facilities on this corner lot. I'd like to think that the neighbors and the people that come for band competitions, track events at Davis High have looked across the street and seen this garden and wondered, "How does the community do this on a Main Street?" And then even though it's sad to lose our garden, I would think it would be more sad to have a development that didn't follow the adopting plan for mixed-use development north of Bowman's, north of 200 North. I look forward to that development in the next twenty years to come. This will be an exciting place to live, and we should not ignore the recommendations of that very expensive survey that suggested the RM be north of town, including the surveys from our residents. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
June, 293 East, 475 South. So I live right next to the community garden. The garden lot is east of my lot. My biggest concern is safety. Their drive access will be on the west end of the parcel, and when the RM building sets back, their driveway will be right facing my house, and it, it is surely putting my house and my four young kids at a great risk of accidents. If they don't drive good, they may hit my kids on my house. In that case, I don't feel safe at all, even when my kids are playing in my backyard, in my own backyard. Fans will not help. If accidents happen, there should be a solid concrete wall along property lines to prevent accidents, in addition to the trees. Instead of having one next-door home on the east side, my home has to deal with all the traffic and cars from six multifamily homes on daily basis, maybe twenty cars or more. The six homes will share one single driveway, and there will, there will only be one entrance and exit. It is very dangerous, especially for my four young kids' safety. There are also a lot of young kids running around in the neighborhood and foot traffic since they are high school, junior high, elementary school nearby. We need to keep our kids safe. So this lot is just a unique location with all the schools nearby. It doesn't happen like this anywhere else in Caseville, nor have we seen this in our cities. This lot may look like a great place to build RM building, but on that very particular corner, right at the intersection, along the very busy and risky Main Street, right at entrance of 475 South, with the dynamics of that area, it is certainly not the right place to build multifamily units. My family and I strongly oppose to the rezoning from R1 to RM. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're up, Doug.
Uh, is, Wenfei? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Wenfei, I live on 293, 475 South. We know the, the developers mentioned that the property suits the 2019 general plan, claims is on Main Street, but the 2021 general plan added more restrictions regarding the multifamily residential. Number one, prohibit high-density land use in areas established for lower-density residential uses. Number two, most multifamily residential areas are anticipated to be located adjacent to or within the city center. This is the most updated Caseville City zoning map. You can see that all the current RM zoning are either adjacent to or within the general commercial zoning or central commercial zoning. If you approve this case, this would be the very first arbitrary spot zoning change in our city. I would agree that the 2019 plan is current, but should we totally disregard this upcoming 2021 general plan? If we need to get a result to RM, it immediately makes the to-be-adopted 2021 general plan meaningless. Let's come back to the 2019 general plan. That is, takes show that eighty-six percent of bicyclists involve crashes and sixty percent of pedestrians involve crashes or happen at intersections. Can anyone in this room make a bold promise that his or her children, grandchildren won't become next victim at that intersection because the improper rezoning? Nobody can, except the two buyers, because they're not living here, they don't care. So the buyers, they have strong motivation to do high-density building. Personally, I want to believe they are good people, good people, but business point of view, they have very low credibility. Actually, we have a long list of how they are cheating and manipulating, I don't want to go there around. We cannot, we cannot trust what they are going to build. We also doubt their building quality. They have the ability to get out the agreement, we all know that Ms. White is an attorney. So how could we grant the least restricted RM zoning to them? So planning commission is, is a waste of time, because they refuse to answer any question regarding the parking, traffic, safety, flooding issues. Ms. Hunt and Mr. Blackham were there, and you know what I'm talking. But at last, I, I, I would say that with current R1 zoning, they can still build a townhouse and make good money. We're not against development, but, but please.
Thank you for your attention and, and we will say that we really appreciate your time and effort to meet and listen to our concerns. This is the neighbor's petition letter, together with our 507, 79 signatures. This is our voice.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Doug Haskell?
I'm Doug Haskell. I live at 251 East, 425 South, kind of the backyard of this property. I'm a little confused. Is this going to be a townhouse or is this going to be a rental project? I, I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting, I had COVID, so I couldn't make it. So are they planning on, I guess, renting this? Those are rental properties? Is that what you're doing? Not sure. Which brings my concern, we, me and my wife own an in-house daycare. If that's, if it's a rental, how are they going to enforce a background check to assure the safety of these children that are at my house from sexual predators, you know, all the nasty stuff that goes on in the world now? And a rental unit, multifamily on three lots, doesn't that depreciate your property of everyone else for the profit of two? He just gave you five hundred, six and nine signatures, I think I heard him say? It's going to affect every one of our property values, so they can make a couple hundred thousand bucks. I don't see where the justice is there. So I, I strongly am against the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Russ?
Want to thank the city council and the mayor for allowing us to actually voice our opposition to this rezone from RM, or from R1 to RM. I think, actually, I haven't heard one person in the neighborhood that is for this rezone. There, there, there would be a lot more here, but there's a lot of other things going on, families and, and kids and so forth, that, from people who would have liked to have been here to voice their opposition. It's not about anti-development, because it's, it's just not. It's getting the proper zoning. Spot zoning is always a controversial issue. I, I firmly believe that remaining R1 is the best option for this location. A lot of things have been said about Main Street, and the address is actually listed as Main Street, but it's not a Main Street property. It's a 475 South issue. And everything is going to be facing, from what I've seen, 475. Now, that street is also much narrower, narrower there, there's an S curve that comes through there. Many of you, I know many of you have taken your time and done your research on this and, and have been out to the property. The other night, I was unable to come to the meeting that was actually in Fei's garage. Many of you noticed that the congestion that was probably caused over there because of the cars. That happens quite frequently when the gardens are in full function. That is a, that is a hotspot. But that's not really the issue, it's the preservation of the neighborhood. I, I don't believe that this, this project is going against anything that the 2019 plan that we've, uh, heard and, uh, has been addressed here is, is, in fact, I think the plan actually supports remaining R1. It is a family neighborhood, or not, I, I, nobody is really opposed to building homes that are, that are, are, I guess, affordable, but, you know, I don't know if that's going to necessarily be the case, if high-density homes are built there. But trying to pack, um, higher-density housing into a, a lot such as that is, is the wrong choice. I actually, this is my business, I am in property management, I actually manage a lot of townhomes, and the biggest number-one issue is parking. How they're saying that they're going to get eighteen parking spots on that lot is beyond me. I don't know how that will happen. Parking is al, always going to be an issue, and if you have tenants in there, I guarantee you, oftentimes, you'll have one, two, three, four individual people that are all going to have cars. It's going to be a big problem on that spot. Anyway, appreciate it, council.
Thank you. Hang on just a sec. There you go.
Lorraine Starkey, 573 South, 350 East. I have, I just, I'm kind of being my husband, he is, has a cold, and he wanted to share, not the cold, but the information.
Thank you.
He got another traffic report per Councilman, Councilperson Hunt, who suggested that we do that. He was able to get, um, ten more years, and it is about an accident a year, and most of it happens during the school year, during the hours. The, um, we know that's not a surprise. He basically wants us to know that there, there will be visibility problems, no matter what you put there, because there is no, nothing now, and there are problems now. And so, as neighbors and as concerned citizens of the people that are walking by, we're encouraging the, a traffic study, and we're, I'm not a traffic study, an engineer, to look at that and especially help with the visibility. Yesterday, I also attended the moderate-income housing deep dive. They allowed citizens, as well as important people, and I was able to follow through with another city planner who is in Centerville. His name is Corey Snyder, he's been there zoning for eighteen years. He has a lot of respect for you each. And he wanted to explain to me about their Hofoka property, which was zoned as RM, and then it became not affordable. It was a lot of anxiety and a little affordability is what he put. Basically said that it was rezoned, and then it was reapportioned. Um, he pointed, I was pointed to a recent University of Utah study that says that increased density does not equal increased affordability. And the question that we'd like you to consider is, does it sincerely, do we sincerely believe that it matches the Caseville City goals that are set? What are the goals? They're coming up on October 1st. Is there a reasonable opportunity of getting our desired result of moderate-income housing, which, in Centerville, which is the same, uses the same formula as we do, because they have, the Davis County is eleven hundred and twenty-four dollars per month as a moderate income number, and they say you've got to try, so try. And then they, you have to report to the state and tell why it failed. We would like to not be the failed experiment. We are encouraging you to say no. We would like to encourage the two reasons to say yes compared to the five hundred-plus reasons to say no.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is it Jackie Johnson?
She's not here.
Okay, okay, she signed up twice, all right. Doug Foster?
My husband's a member of the Utah National Gardens, called me on military business, so is it all right if I speak in the office?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'd like to thank all of you guys tonight. I apologize, I may repeat something that's already been.
Cut in a minute.
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little person, so.
For them.
Okay, sorry, guys.
Will you state your name and address?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm Jamie Foster. I live at 898 East 400 South.
Thanks.
So just off of Laurelwood. So, um, one of the things that concerns us as a military family is that we've lived a number of different places, and we've seen a number of different issues arise with various development requests. I'm a social worker, I'm a therapist in the local area, and one of the things that I always tell my clients is that words have meaning, and it matters for us to be able to have honest, excuse me, conversations. I understand that the property owners, the gentlemen who are here are saying, "This is what we would like to do with this property." Please refer to us as property owners, but it appears clear that this property was purchased with the intention of development. I'm wondering if it's possible to pull up the aerial view, if you would indulge me momentarily? One of our primary concerns is, yes, we think that it's important, everything that's been talked about with safety concerns, watershed issues, everything that's been brought up is absolutely legitimate, but if you look at the aerial view of a map, which goes, and then you follow it all the way up, that green space, across 200, all the way up, that sod farm that's behind DATC, even though that may be a separate request, that's also on a future docket to be allowed to be rezoned for future development. What's concerning to us as citizens is that this particular property appears to be just the first domino to potentially fall when it comes to potentially reshaping our community. So what I would really highly encourage you guys to do is understanding, you have to take each individual case, but there is a larger theme and there is a larger problem that when we're talking about high-density affordable housing, we've already seen. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be affordable, but there is going to be potential, like, significant impact on our community. So please understand that one of our primary concerns, and we've seen it time and time again, both in this country and when we've been stationed overseas, that when you allow for developers to come in and start putting in these things, this is a precedent that we're setting. So what's going to stop anybody else from saying, "You've already made this decision once, why not for us?" So that's very concerning for us, but we really appreciate you guys' time, we appreciate your consideration, and so I'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we did have Heather Noten. You're good? Okay, and we had one, okay. Is that Brant? Brant? No? Okay, all right, thank you. So, um, we will now close public comment, and I will turn the time over to council for council. council questions, discussions. Councilmember Blackham.
I don't have any questions.
You don't have any questions? Okay.
I have questions.
Okay. Councilmember Adams.
I think, did you hit your mic first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Olson.
No, go ahead.
Gary?
I hit it just because I saw Mike's was on.
I've turned it off three times. What's going on?
So, for the, let's see, I'm going to try and go, only have the landowners come up Will you go to the slide where you had the 2019 plan? And it's a few more, it has to do with sort of what we agreed to, yeah. This one, so, am I correct, and, or, my question would be, does R1 fall under the zoning properties that we aim to achieve with the moderate-income housing? I know it's not highlighted. I was just wondering if that, if I read it right, where it says, single-family R1?
Yes, it is listed within the goals.
Listed, okay. And, so that was my first, because, I guess, one of the, what I'm trying to see is, why are we rezoning? And that's the first reason that we were talking about rezoning, was that we're trying to meet the goals of what the state's asked us to do?
Sure. And to answer that question, that could be rezoning industrial to R1, it could be rezoning agricultural to R1, or commercial to R1, so...
Okay, but R1 does...
Those are some instances which would meet that requirement.
Follow, okay. The second question is, if, if there were to be three driveways proposed in an R1 development, who's in charge of making sure that they're safe?
So, if the property was subdivided into three parcels, the building plans for each of those units would have to come in and meet the standards that we have prescribed in code. Those are already set. So, driveways can't be closer than 12 feet from each other. Other than that, I don't know what those requirements are. I'd have to dig a little bit deeper into that. But the setbacks help ensure safety from the traffic standpoint, or visibility triangle.
Okay.
But essentially, to answer your question, is, for single-family zoning, we really would not have any ability to regulate where a driveway was placed, other than meeting the regulations we have on the book, and that 12-foot distance in between drive approaches.
Can I ask you guys, one of you, a couple of questions?
Will you come to the mic?
Maybe you answered this, but if you can do six, six units with the R1, what's the purpose of switching it to RM?
Sure. What the staff has, you know, obviously said a couple of times is...
Talking to the mic a little closer.
Two big, excuse me, two big reasons why. One, safety. Two, parking. As Melinda had mentioned, with three driveways, no, we couldn't, you know, you cut this down into three separate places, and as Melinda said, putting them 12 feet apart, if you actually look back at the aerial, if you would mind, Melinda.
That's probably, is that a better aerial? No, that one.
I was looking at the neighborhood on the south, well, if you could zoom into this one a little bit. I don't know if you can.
Got to go to Google Maps, right?
Yeah, like on 550. So, if you look on the street on 550, just on the other side of this church, there's a driveway really close to the intersection. Should we parcel this into three separate ones with three separate driveways? You're going to end up with that. You're going to end up with the driveway right there. Obviously, that's not going to be more safe. As to, you know, as we've discussed in the development agreement here tonight, we do believe the one driveway is far better, not only because we have one inlet and outlet that we can move away from Main Street, but that we can provide additional parking actually on the parcel.
Okay.
As was provided earlier about the gardens, right? That they have this seasonal issue with people parking on the street with gardens. Well, because there is no other parking. Either you're parking on the street, or you're parking in the church across the street. However, if we push it to one driveway and put those lots in the back, meaning parking spots, our engineer, and I'll give everybody a copy here, not only if we put in the development agreement to provide more parking than the code actually requests, but we can provide 18 to 20 units on the property instead of putting it on the street.
Now, that 18 to 20, that's two-car garages, so there's 12 that are actually enclosed. Okay.
Should we have left it to three separate parcels? That's just not going to be possible.
Okay. So, just so I get, I mean, we have this time where we're just supposed to ask questions, and sometimes it's like Jeopardy, so you have to, like, you know, put it in the form of a question. But I think, just to reiterate, the reason for wanting to switch it to RM, while you can do six units on the R18, the reason to switch it is safety?
Correct.
Okay.
I think, I think an added benefit, in addition to the safety, in addition to the parking, is cost to the consumer.
Okay, that, no, that's good.
Should we put that many extra buildings, obviously, your costs are going to increase. You're adding that many extra walls between four separate buildings, or, excuse me, three separate buildings. You've got your three foundations, you've got three separate yards, you've got one, two, at least six extra walls? Walls? Yeah, you're going to have additional building costs, which is only going to increase the cost in selling a home.
You then have the cost of subdivision, you have the cost of three foundations, and it's hundreds of thousands more, that you have to pass on, and we do whatever we decide to do.
Okay, okay.
Build something more affordable.
Mark, maybe, heavy, when you're going to talk, yeah, just talking to the mic, so they can hear in the back. We can hear you just great without the mic, but they can't. So, if you could repeat your comment?
Yeah, so, so, building three homes and essentially getting the same amount of units, we have to build three foundations, you know, separate exterior walls, we have to incur costs of, you know, subdivision and what that costs, engineering plans for all of that subdivision as well. So, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars more. It's not just a small amount. So, this allows us to build something that's more affordable. If it costs us that much more to build it, we have to incur that much more cost to, you know, be able to sell it, or whatever we decide to do.
Understood. And thank you for, so, so that I know the answer to the question is, that it's safety, but also to keep the cost of the units down. What, do you have an estimate on how much you plan to charge per unit?
We don't, because every, as this continues to go, our costs keep going up. I mean, interest rates over the last month have gone drastically up. It's continuing.
There's not really a range where you want...
We can't even get an estimate unless we know what we're going to build.
Okay. That's all my questions.
To add to that, but that's an initial reason why, at the beginning, we even chose RM. So, instead of just doing six, or, you know, three homes, or three different town, twin homes, we, that's why we went for RM in the beginning. Then it became obvious that there were more issues.
Awesome. Yeah, and appreciate, appreciate your answers.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I have a few questions. So, I spent a few hours last night reading through the planning committee notes and whatnot, and there was a question asked of you if you would interact with neighbors on the plan, and I know the city sends out notifications and whatnot, but I'm just curious, like, did you interact with the community, and how did you do that, to gather their input?
Yes, we did. We took two separate days to knock doors. Actually, a handful of the people that came up and spoke, we had actually spoke with them on the porch. And so, yeah, we have reached out to the community. We spoke with them. We, I know that, you know, the developer word is not the word.
Excuse me, let's be respectful. Thank you. I know you might disagree. And if you have conversations that you'd like to have, will you step outside and have them, and then come back? Oh, I understand, and it's, okay. What? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
10 people spoke, and we had spoken with at least three.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
To answer that too, Nate, also, I mean, when we spoke with these people, it's not just a short time that you're speaking with someone. So, we couldn't get to every house within the 500 feet. It's hard to do that.
Sure.
But we felt like people that were really close and the most impacted by this, we did have great conversations with.
Okay. And that was, to be clear, you spoke with three people, right?
No, no, from the 10 that spoke tonight, is what I'm referring to.
Oh, okay.
In addition to other neighbors, we spoke with...
Oh, I see, okay.
Three hundred and ten who got up tonight and spoke with.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
I can count through all my notes of who we spoke with and what we talked about. I can go through.
And then another question. So, the planning commission also asked, and this is something I'm really concerned about, the slope. And, you know, we have the 30-foot height restriction, but, you know, from the top of that slope to the bottom, that's a pretty significant difference. And, you know, I'm looking at these neighborhoods, and we want to protect the culture of the neighborhoods, and we want to have new development that blends. And so, I'm really concerned about the height difference of the Faye's home, or potentially the other home, Walter's home. And the question was asked, could you do a step approach? And have you looked into that, and kind of what's your thought process behind that?
Yes, we have spoken with Melinda about that, and we don't have any issue with doing that. Doing, if, based on the slope, doing a step down, is that what you're referring to with the roofline? We don't have any problems with that.
We want to do that, looks better, too.
Okay. And then, within the 30-foot height, can you put three stories there, or what are we talking about here? Two stories, three stories?
We are anticipating on doing three-story units, if that's what...
You are not?
We are not.
Okay. Two stories, okay. And then, let's see if I have... I think that's, I think that's it.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Any other questions from council? Yes?
Yeah, I got a couple, if I may. Couple times, I've heard, you know, asked the question, for rent or for sale, and you say you're not sure yet. Now, I've been a renter many times during my life, and I've lived, I counted them up, 15. My wife and I have been married 39 years. We've lived 15, 16 years. We've lived in townhomes, apartments, apartments just when we were in college, that doesn't count, duplexes, quads. I don't think I was ever a threat to anybody. I mean, I, you know, I think there's a lot of misconceptions, a lot of information that I've heard that, I think it's unfortunate, because it makes it more difficult to have real dialogue and come to agreements, and what do we really need to do? But, but I've heard, say, a couple of times, I don't know, we're just, you know, we're for rent or sell. What's wrong with building these and selling them?
We're not opposed to it, if that's what the council's asking.
Yeah, I'm just sort of, because it seems an ambiguous answer, and if I put the amount of time, which I believe you've put into thinking about this, I'm going about it one way, you know? Do I want to be, and I'm not going to say, you know, well, do I want to be a rental manager, property, you know, property manager, or do I want to develop something, sell it, and move on? And there's two completely difference in that. I think the neighbors would feel much more comfortable, and we talked earlier, you're stocking these units, you're looking at about 2,000 square foot. That's a good size, that's a nice-sized home. My daughter and her husband in Oregon, they're raising their family in 1,800 square feet with their three kids. You're doing 2,000 square foot, you're not looking, I mean, you're looking at maybe a young family, but you're looking at someone who could be their, heck, I lived in that size home when I had four kids. And, heck, you go back on the East Coast, and you're lucky to get that size of home. I understand that, but, but it's still, and with prices, I was concerned with moderate housing, $1,100, there's no way anything we're able to do right now for building that you're going to be considering moderate housing.
The apartments by my house in Farmington are $2,200 a month in their apartments, so we're going to try and make these as affordable as we can, but I think...
Well, I understand, but there's no way, I mean, right up front, we should be honest with ourselves, that we're never going to meet the moderate price tag that the state, or the federal or state is putting on us.
It's subjective. Sure.
I mean, if we are, then we're talking apartments, you know, anyways, and so, almost should be taken out of the conversation, in my opinion. But that's just because I just don't see how we, we get down to there, unless we're talking really cruddy quality, and I don't think you want to do that. And the neighbors wouldn't, I mean, none of us, we wouldn't allow it, I think, as a city. I would say, you know, my biggest considerations, as I've looked at it, I thought the, the one reason that I would say an RM works, because I don't know, I don't have the experience with maybe R1, R2, or R4, is the one access off the street. I mean, I've read, I've read multiple emails and talked with neighbors talking about the concerns on 475, which seems to lend itself to a single entrance. And if I'm wrong with that, then, then the R18 is fine. But my understanding with the neighbors is that the single entrance seems to be able to take out, because then you're able to drive out instead of back out. A dear friend of mine lives on the corner of Laurelwood and Main Street, and every time I go to her place, I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands as I back out, right there on the corner next to the stop sign. And so, that's what seemed to make sense to me. But I get the feeling that even with conversations, that residents are not in favor of that. Yeah, please. I'm rambling, but I'm just, you know, I've been thinking...
You've got to work on your jeopardy.
Hey, I've been thinking about, I've been thinking about this, you know, flying back and forth from DC the last couple of days, so...
Thanks for the time you've put into that. There's an entrance on the property already that's on Main Street. It's right next to the Walters driveway right there. I mean, it would be challenging. I bet if you spoke with that family, it's a challenge for them to back out on Main Street. I've seen them do it, backing out onto Main Street and then pulling forward. It's got to be a challenge. And that entrance that's up there, right at the top corner, the east, the northeast corner, that's the entrance right now to the property. We feel like pulling it down to the bottom on 475 is a lot safer, and having one is even more safer.
Well, yeah, and if I'm on that corner of 475 and backing out, that seems problematic, especially for folks turning off, southbound off of Main Street.
We're not opposed, if that's the route we have to go, to do three homes and put three driveways there. We're not opposed to that, if that's the route we have to go. But if safety is a real concern, that doesn't solve that.
But I think my biggest concern has been just the aesthetics, does it fit the neighborhood? And I'm not convinced that the townhome fits the neighborhood, and a lot of it ends up being because of the slope. I'm not opposed to townhomes, like I say, I've lived in them, and they can, they can be lovely, and there's lots of examples that are around. But does it fit the neighborhood? When you have the duplexes that are just to the north, that are quite nice, and just, that's my biggest concern. With the slope of the, with the slope of the property, and even if it's only 25 feet high, you're still talking nine feet higher, close to the street, how does it look? You know, how does it fit the neighborhood and the feel of what we're trying to keep as, you know, the hometown? That's my biggest concern out of all of this, is there? And that really wasn't a question, was it, John?
Oh, okay. Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, I have a question, just kind of a follow-up question. So, in the folks that you spoke with, because I, we've all spoken with a lot of folks... So, in the folks that you spoke with, because I, we've all spoken with a lot of folks, and this has been really inspiring, actually, the involvement of this council, I've been so impressed. And, but, the folks that you've spoken with, I know safety keeps coming up, but I've also heard a lot of folks mention a different type of zoning. And so, I'm curious, your thought process, like, leading up to this, did you hear concerns about that and why did you stick with this particular zone versus another?
Yeah, so, I think when we first started this, when people heard RM zone, there was a lot of speculation of what was going to happen. And I don't think anybody really knew what our intentions were with what we were going to do. We purchased this property, you know, it wasn't something that was, well, I won't get into how we purchased it, I sent you an email about that. But we, we, RM, there was this big fear, and I think a lot of this spread around the neighborhood, about a lot of apartments, 24 apartments is what we heard, 16 apartments is what we heard. So, I think that that fear was legitimate. People think, think with an RM zone that we can just come in and do whatever we want, build a high-rise building, put as many apartments as we can. That's never been our intention. We never wanted to do apartments. We want to do townhomes because they, they look nice and, and they can be great for a neighborhood and they can be affordable too. So, that's our intention. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, council, we appreciate the questions, appreciate you being here with us as well.
Mayor, can I just briefly interject?
Yes.
I don't know how this motion's going to go. If it's a motion to approve, if we could have two motions, a motion to approve the development agreement and then a motion to approve the rezone, that would be appreciated. If it's a motion to deny the rezone, it can just be one motion.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Councilmember.
I'm ready to make a motion on this. I think we've all heard a lot, we've heard a lot from the neighbors. I've never seen something that's been so actively worked on by the neighbors of anything I think I've seen. But I'm going to make this mo, I'm, I'm making a motion that we deny the rezone from 478 South Main from R18 to RM.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
Oh.
Oh, comments, comments. Councilmembers, any comments?
I guess we don't need to-
And your comment can come with your motion.
Yeah, I mean, I want to just make a quick comment on why I, why I seconded Mike's motion. I think, for me, looking at, I'm so thankful that you would purchase the property and develop it because we are in need of houses for people to live in. And, and affordable houses, right? Houses that people can purchase after they've lived in an apartment, maybe had a kid, and now they've had two kids. And where I moved into was a 2,000-square-foot home, and then I was able to move into my home that I'm in now. There aren't a lot of 2,000-square-foot homes now. They, they just aren't around and they aren't affordable. And so, I'm grateful that you would purchase this. And when I look at spot zoning, I look at two things. I look at, number one, are we going to achieve something here that we can't achieve with the current zoning? And I feel like when you agreed to do the six units, it's like, well, you can do six units with R1. And it doesn't really affect the safety, having three driveways, in my opinion. And if it does, then our code would change that, you know? And then, the second thing I always look, look at is if there's no community outreach, like, if nobody is opposed to a spot zone, then I'm like, okay, seems like it's okay, neighbors don't really care. But in this case, there is. And so, that's why I, you know, seconded the motion. And it has nothing to do with the two of you. I'm thankful that you'd, I hope that you'll go forward and, and do what's best in the R18 zoning and that this neighborhood will just be grateful for it and that people can, you know, put down the pitchforks or the signs and, and come, come together and be grateful for what you guys have done in purchasing the property.
I have a few comments too I'd like to make.
Yes.
I'd like to second that and your, your first development, you're really going through the fire here, but appreciate you coming and speaking to us. We need development, we need homes. Where I, my concerns here is the spot zoning, the, the blending with the community, but ultimately, I am so impressed with how many people have come out. You guys have been very respectful. We've had several meetings, lots of interaction, and I do think that, that's worth something. And I think as a council, we need to look to the future for development, but we also need to protect the identity of our city. And I feel very strongly about that. And I would just go to say that, you know, for this development or future developments from other folks in other areas, I would like to see more of an effort to work with the public, to gather more input, leading up to this, because I, I do think, yes, safety's been talked about so much. But in reality, you can look at any neighborhood in the city and there's, there's various safety issues. To me, it's, there is no RM zoning around this area, and that's a concern to me. And I think that we just really need to think long-term as a community, like, what type of community do we want? And we do need affordable housing, or housing that is affordable, I should say. And we can do that with each one of the zones, really. And so, I just want to applaud the neighborhood around this area and I want to applaud my fellow council members. We've all put in a lot of work to get this right. And we want that developed in a correct, or in a right, in the right way, but we also want it to blend and we want the folks to feel comfortable in the neighborhood. And, so that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, council?
I just want to say that I, you know, I, I do appreciate the residents. I want you to know that we do listen to you. We agree with you that what they're proposing is not compatible for your neighborhood. And I, I think that's why this council has, has been so open to listening to what you have to say. And I'm not going to repeat everything they said, but I agree with all my council members.
All right. Thank you. So, we will continue with a vote. Councilmember Hunt.
Can you restate the?
Oh, the motion?
The motion is to deny the rezone, so by, an aye vote would mean you would deny it. Okay.
So, we have a motion and a second to deny. Councilmember Hunt?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion to deny was unanimous. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, our next action item is Action Item 6C, a resolution for the council to accept a petition to adjust common boundary. You are excused. Thank you so much for being here. But we do, we will continue our meeting. And it is being recorded, so, yeah, thank you. Okay, 6C. Is that going to be Nick that will present, 6C? Shane?
Please.
Is that Nick? Melinda?
So, our next item is to consider an annexation, or consider accepting an annexation plan or application that's been submitted to the city. There are several steps that are involved in an annexation, and the first step is that the council, in a public meeting, formally recognizes and accepts the application. So, the resolution that's before you tonight essentially would do that and just say that we, we accept this application and we will process it. Approving the resolution doesn't obligate the city council to approve the annexation, but it obligates us to go through the process that state laws prescribed. There are specific requirements that the county has to go through with, they play a role, their applicant plays a role with notifying adjacent property owners within 300 feet and the affected entities, which would be the school district, utility companies, those types of things. And so, if the council approves this tonight, we will come back at a later meeting where we will then formally acknowledge that all of the steps and the application process have been taken and they've been properly followed. And then, at a future date after that, we would have a public hearing and then the council would, would render a decision on the application, whether to accept the annexation or not.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to? No?
Do you have the-
Okay, all right.
Do you have the overhead, so you can show more detail?
Yes. So, thank you, Councilmember Blackham. The, the property is located up here on Oxford Drive.
It's kind of a strange piece. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac right now that, for some reason, is still in the county where you can see the cul-de-sac and all the improvements are in. They're just trying to annex enough property to-
So, they can develop it.
Do two lots on the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, and you can see too that the, let me get my mouse over on the screen, that the county line, the city border actually goes through the middle of the parcel, which is a little bit odd, too. So, these other, you know, existing lots have been developed neighboring to that. The next slide would just show the area that they are looking to annex, a portion of the existing parcel. So, it's, let me look back at my notes. The entire parcel is 25.375 acres. This portion that they're proposing to annex is just over one acre. And-
I just have a question.
Sure.
In this, in this annexation, Shane, there's no Rocky Mountain structures or anything we have to pay for it?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, and just point of order, we don't have anyone signed up for public comment, so we can just continue.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Questions, council?
Sorry.
Councilmember Hunt?
Our, our, so this is not the full property. Do we know why the, the, it's just a small part of the property? Is that, am I reading that incorrectly? Why they only want to annex a small part?
Will you come up to the mic? Thank you. And will you state your name and address so that we've got it for the record?
My name is Paul Kingston. The area that we're looking at, my address, or the address is 388 Lane, so it's on the whole place there. But the address, or the annex area, we're trying to just develop that area, so the other stuff is still farm and they just don't want, the owners don't want to change that. They just want to do that to annex into the city of Kayso for the development of two parcels.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, seeing no questions.
It's an easy one.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to accept a petition to adjust the common boundary line with Davis County at approximately 775 East Oxford Drive.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments? No? All right. Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous approval there. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to our work items, cell tower lease discussion.
That's me, mayor. We, this is a similar item to the last item, sort of, in that it's kind of just a first step in a process. And really, what we're looking from, for from the council is a general consensus on whether or not we should move forward with this lease. We've had a cell tower lease company approach us, interested in leasing some ground in where the Burton substation is, so just on the west side of Burton, west side of I-15, just off of Burton. And we vetted this out as staff, it's, it's power department property. We've asked them, they had a certain location on that property they wanted to use, we have had them move it around just to get out of our way. I think we have a general, leasing property isn't something the city is involved in doing, it's not something that we are proactive in doing, but they've come to us, we believe that it'll probably increase cell coverage in our community, so it has some positive benefits. And really, what we're looking for tonight is, are you okay with us proceeding? Because they would have to go through a conditional use process with the planning commission and, and we would have to prove it, an agreement. We would get a, we would lease this to them, we would get some revenue from this, but some of those details are yet to be worked out. But we didn't want to waste their time or our time or your time if you weren't interested in leasing this property out to them. We kind of kicked back to them in the beginning and said, if you could find a private location, that might be best. They, they, I think, made that effort and came back and said, this is, this is actually really where we'd like to be. We do have a current lease over on 200 North at our other substation that's over there by Sanders Glass, you're probably familiar with that. So, we'd probably do something similar and we have a similar lease with similar revenue generated. So, open for discussion.
I am, I want to talk about this a little bit because I, for one, am a little bit leery about leasing ground on property that the city owns that we haven't completely finished developing. I mean, there is area there that we may have to increase the size of the substation. We may have to do this, that, the other. I mean, currently, we, we took some land in right now where we want to try to do something with it, but we can't because we were encumbered by some sort of an agreement. I'm not in favor, I don't think you make enough money to make it worth having to move it later if we had to, or if it was to encumber something that we needed on that property. And I wished I knew what the future held for those types of properties, but I don't. And I don't think that the lease is that much. I know we're currently leasing one down in Barnes Park and giving that money to recreation, it's not a lot of money. If, for some reason, we ever had to have them move it, I don't think it'd be worth it. So, that's just my opinion. I, I, I don't know that I am for leasing private entities on public ground, just because I don't know what the future holds for our, our properties.
Right now, right now on the prop, am I allowed to just talk?
Sure. It's a work item.
Right now, don't we just have, right now on that property, don't we just have, like, trucks and parking things, right?
There's a substation there, obviously, and then, then we do have some, like, material we've stored there. But yeah, it's, it's pretty industrial and, and, Councilmember Blackham makes a good point, we really don't know what we don't know. We, we believe that we probably don't need this, that much space for that, if you see that small square there where they would put that, we think we could squeeze that in. But yeah, we, we don't know what the future holds and so, and I, I tend to agree, just maybe from a personal perspective, I just, I'd rather them just do this in private property than just leave us out of it. But, you know, there's something to be said for increased cell coverage.
Yeah, but I look at, I, I drive by that property constantly and I think something's going to happen there that's not a tower.
I can't even imagine if we had to increase the size of the substation for some reason to the north, because I don't believe we'd go to the south because it's too close to the Burton Lane over pa, or where Burton Lane starts to change to grade. So, I would believe it would probably go to the north or maybe to the east. I doubt the west, but I, I don't, but there's always that chance.
Sure.
I don't want us to lose options on property that we own.
We do tend to have very long leases because the, the sale companies really don't, they don't do this for five years. They need to know, they need to have a commitment from us. So, it would probably be a 30-to-50-year commitment.
Wow. I tend to agree with you and Mike, I don't, I also don't think the, be the best use of our property and if, especially if we're not going to get a ton of money out of it.
Yeah, I would say, I agree with that, too. And there's homes across the street and I worry about the aesthetics. And also, it's kind of hard to say without seeing data, like-
Where would we go from here, then?
I, I think if you're not interested, I would just, if that's a consensus, I would just tell the, the company that we're not interested in making.
Okay, Perry?
You know, I just feel ignorant on it. So, I, I commented enough earlier anyways.
If there's anything that you want, like, from a more information perspective, I mean, I guess we could always say, instead of 20,000 a year, we'll do it for 100,000 a year and they can say no to that, but, you know, I don't- and they can say no to that. But, you know, I don't, you're right, and Councilmember Blackham's right, our existing leases are in market, and that's really what the private sector has said, that they would pay, and we've just kind of done the same thing in areas that we've leased out. So, but other than that, you know, we're fine to just tell them, thanks but no thanks, good luck, and hopefully you find another spot.
Councilmember Hunt, do you have any?
No, I was kind of thinking it might be okay until you said the lease was 30 to 50 years, so that's probably more than you want to bite off.
It's really long, and we have one over here, the one I mentioned that you all know about, and I think we still have another 20 years. And I'll bet I get a call from that company twice a year asking us to extend it past the 20 years. And I'm like, we have two decades. I'm not even going to work here in 20 years.
Excuse me?
So-
It's because your hair is getting gray.
Look how old I am. Older by the day. So, yeah.
Sounds like that's the direction. Okay.
That's what I'm hearing, that I'll just let them know that they should move on somewhere else.
Okay. Nick, point of order, do we need to make a motion to extend our meeting, since we're going to go into a closed session, and it'll probably maybe be beyond 10, or?
Yeah, it's probably the most procedure.
Will someone make a motion to extend?
I'll make a motion to extend.
Second?
I wanted to, I have a second.
No, I'll second it, sorry.
For a second, okay. Okay, Councilmember Oaks?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, so now we have councilmember reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
I would like to talk about one thing. I was able to actually go down and witness the swearing-in of the new Farmington Fire Chief. I just wanted to make you all aware of that. He is a young man that worked for Farmington Fire. He's been with their volunteer for 30 years and became a full-time employee 15 years ago, and has worked with them. Because we work so closely with Farmington, if you have the iSpy or see the calls we go on, you'll notice that we do go to Farmington quite often. We have a really good working relationship. His name is Rich Love. He's got a really good working relationship with our chief, and I just wanted you to know that happened just recently, and it's a good thing. And I heard a lot of good things about him, and I'm sure we'll look forward to working with him.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that our Central Davis Communities That Care is starting to come together, and will be issuing kind of invitations to people to be on the key leaderboard. And then our Interfaith Council met, like, last week, so we're working on ramping that up again, too.
Yes, we are. Thank you so much. Shane?
Just a meeting tomorrow at 8:30.
And the Easter egg hunt?
Yes.
On Saturday. Everybody should be there for, there might be a bunny.
There might be a tall bunny.
There might be a somewhat tall bunny, rotund bunny.
Can you announce, I don't know the specifics, but there may be people watching, can you announce, like, the time, location?
It's nine o'clock, nine o'clock at Barnes Park. It is over at 9:10, pretty much, because it goes fast, people grab those eggs and run. So, be there early if you plan to participate. And the eggs will be held and hidden in the ball fields. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we need a motion to enter into a closed session. Would someone make that motion?
Don't we have, don't we close this first and then?
We actually leave it open.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good, thanks, Mayor.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session.
I'll, yeah.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I use, can we?
Yes, sir.